Good morning, everyone, and I'd like to welcome you here today to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, July eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. Don Twanker, and then Lego, myself, Mike Spanish, Bayou County Supervisors. Lisa is our auditor, Bjorn is IT, Mary is here with the media. And first on our agenda this morning is Mr. Todd Kenny, our Jackson County Engineer.
It's Mr.
Mister, alright. Good morning, so. First thing here, right away contracts for the hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue Bridge. Purchase of point five five acres. Ralph Saunders and then point four acres Dale and Nancy Kilburg. So I don't know, so we do like sales to come up with the the cost per acre and then. Get estimates for new fencing, we're gonna take out old fencing as part of the contract and then we pay them. For installing new fence when the kind, when the project's done, so that's at eighty-five dollars a route, that's based on. Pricing plus a little extra from like higher, I think we got it from higher. Other than that, that's all unless you guys have questions about it.
Normal business when you redo a bridge, you can sound each and every way, yeah.
This is a. Not the best, it's at a pretty good skew, so it's probably a little more right away than we would need typically, and this is the one if you remember. When we reviewed the plan sets, it had a gabion wall retaining wall, they were trying to add length and. Get rid of the, yeah, and move the bridge a little bit so we can get rid of the retaining wall, so whatever we're doing is still gonna happen within this proposed driveways.
Motion in second to approve the latter eighty fourth Bridge Avenue right away contract as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried, but.
Okay, next is two permits for utility instruction or installation. One is, well, they're both for Coker Valley, but one is for boring. Under the road and the other one is an open cut on one hundred and thirty-four street, so.
The open cut, they put the room back.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Are we doing both? I have a motion to approve the Macoka Valley Electric. Request for boring under the permit for boring on section twenty-seven and Macoka Valley Electric Farmers Creek section twenty-six. Permit as presented, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Okay, the next is the two entrance permits for the Inspiration Stables, we've kind of talked about this before. It's. There's about three hundred and, no, four hundred and twenty feet separation between the two driveways. From the existing residence, it's, it's, so it's about a thousand feet east of it, so there's an existing residence like right here. It's gonna be about a thousand feet east, it will be the first driveway, so. It's the side distance is fine, the one is gonna be a dry fill and then the other one will have a two minute, so the side distance is good at each building, so.
So there's really no minimal expense to us as far as.
Yeah, so the, I did, so our policy doesn't say what the. Minimum spacing between driveways is, but we have a, I guess, an unwritten policy of a hundred and fifty feet. So this is obviously more than that, so I do think you, you know, the next time, we should always periodically review our policies and update them. But anytime we have like an unwritten thing that we do, we should put it in writing. Yeah, so.
I'll make a motion to approve these.
Oh, second.
Motion in a second to approve Inspiration Stables, the driveway permit as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Alright.
We touched it printed here twice, or what is my?
They have two of them.
Two separate permits.
Yeah.
The last thing here, the temporary easement, construction easement, so this is a, this to kind of give you, it's. Located up here in the, up in Otter Creek, but there's where it's located, okay? The area we're gonna get a temporary easement for is a hundred by seventy. You know, what we're gonna do is, so there's a, this is a picture of the culvert. And so the road is back here, you can see the road, it's, it's filled in, so. We're gonna, we're gonna dig out the outlet, because we have responsibility for the drainage to maintain the drainage. And then we're gonna have Dan Coe come in and jet it. And then the property owner wants to put an extension on the tube and put fill over it so he can like drive work with the side by side or whatever, but. We're gonna, our responsibility is for the cleaning out in front of it and getting jetted, and then what happens after that, if the contractor or the. Property owner wants us to set the tube or backfill or whatever, we'll get reimbursed or he'll just do it himself. But we are gonna have county expense to clean out in front of it enough so we can jet it and get it cleaned out, so. This construction easement gives us, gives us the access to come in and do that work and an approval to do that, so.
If they put an extension on it and maybe a bit of a, hopefully it'll stay flat or whatever, because we'll, it'll cause it to kind of filling faster if there's any kind of. Deviation to that tube.
Well, as long as it's either laid along the same slope or steeper slope, it, it won't, but yeah, if they put it in, if he puts it in and it's not quite right. It, it'll cause potentially a sedimentation through the pipe, so if we don't end up doing it, we'll probably just come back and inspect it.
Well, we, yeah, that's what I was getting, we certainly expect it inspected if they do it themselves.
Yeah, because we'll still have the construction easement, so. So.
One second, Pat.
I have motion in a second to approve the temporary construction easement as presented, all those in favor say aye.
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 Have you, I, and this is, I guess, after the fact, but they've signed off their on board with it, they're okay with this, or?
Yeah, he's, they're already signed, so. Alright, so just in general discussion here, I did. Hear back from. Attorney Keys about the, I sent him the resolution. For the secondary road assessment levies and assessments, and he was, and, and actually, I think I copied you, no? Anyway. No, I didn't, I don't know, I did, anyway, but. He was okay with our process we went through, basically, I think it was just bad, like. But, uh, because I explained what the board, what you have done so far as far as the hearings and that kind of thing, so. He just said, this looks good, it meets the most stringent requirements in the code, so I think it is fine. This should suffice to establish the district in a power to carry to assess any un-deposited amounts. He did say he didn't check the legal descriptions, only the language creating the district empowering assessment, so.
So there was one property owner that was disputing her ability, or she was asking about her ability to contest. Did, did John also address that, so we're doing in the right form that we're doing in the process, in the right process?
Yeah, so what I sent him, I'll read you what. So I said, on June thirteenth, the board held a public hearing in accordance with Iowa Code Chapter three eleven, on June thirtieth, they passed the attached resolution. We discussed in the boardroom what the next step in the process would be, and determined we would prepare another resolution. That has the parcel numbers and the amounts that will be levied and assessed to each parcel based on the engineer's report. Is our thought that when this resolution is passed, it will start the appeal submittal, which would be then person. Which is, I referenced three eleven point two four in the code, and then also be considered a date of assessment. That starts the timing or the clock of what people can request to pay the amount in ten equal installments.
Okay, just so we keep that process in the, in timeframe.
So the next question is. Next week, starting on Sunday, I'll be at the Low Vine Road Conference, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So if you want to do it. On Tuesday, have the resolution, it's, it's ready, I mean, it's ready to go, but I won't be here Tuesday, so if you plan on like having a lot of discussion and all that, that's up to you guys. But I won't be here Tuesday, otherwise, if you want me here, it'd be.
So briefly, we're passing a resolution that does what?
So this one sets all the assessments of the levies.
Okay, but that's not a public hearing, we just passed a resolution, which we've already agreed to, basically.
So you, you've established the district, that's what the original resolution is, now this resolution is gonna establish the levies and all that.
Yeah, and the terms, basically.
Are we done with public hearings and everything is?
Yeah, because I asked him, do we need a second hearing, he said no, so. Code references a final hearing a few times, my question is, does the board need to hold a final hearing and then after the hearing. Pass the resolution that lists the levies and assessment amounts to each parcel or property owner. And he said, this looks good, so. And so I think it is.
It's probably ambiguous.
Yeah. If you want to be safe, you can do another, there's no, there's nothing that says you can't have another hearing.
I think it would be. A smart thing to have a public hearing when we pass this to answer any final questions. And maybe we could lay out how it appeals process goes, telling people that, hey, this starts the clock. For those that want to pay in advance, not to pay the interest across the way they'll take your check. If there's an appeals process, this is how it would lay out, and you know.
If, if that's fine, I would, I would. I would suggest that you have the county attorney here, because I'm not, I mean, if the, if people have questions about the appeals process, and I'm not the guy to answer that, so.
We just, I, I think we need to have it laid out, kind of, this is how it would go, because the first question, the one, I think, Terry, I think. She's gonna ask us, how we, what's the appeals process?
And I already put her in touch with.
Be able to explain that.
I already put her in touch with John.
Yeah. Oh, she is?
I, she talked, I thought, she called me and I, and I suggested, I couldn't answer them questions either, so. I, I suggested that she talk to you and John, actually. So.
Well, so.
Yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying, I mean, again, then you're gonna have to publish again. And I, I don't know if that's necessary to pass this resolution, if we get into the appeals. You know, i- is that gonna back you up as far as a base or putting a base down this year and?
Well, we're doing PCC, so.
Okay, so this is just they come in and do it.
Yeah, we, we still have to do though, I still have to do a budget amendment and a program amendment to get this project added, and then I also is gonna add that. Other bridge project, we got the two million dollars for, so I got amendment. Yeah, so, does it back us up? No. Is it, is it necessary? I would say, based on what John was saying, no, but again, if you guys want to do that, there's nothing to say you can't have a second here, very final here. Just, I just need to know, because if you're not, then we can schedule the resolution, if not, then we need to do. A motion is, well, you couldn't do it today, because it's not on the agenda, so you'd have to do it.
So I would, just my opinion again, I would say we went through this process and we had. A lot of input. And I don't know that you're gonna get any different input that we already passed it, so if we pass the resolution, we're still in, in the realm of.
I guess my question, then, if we don't have a public hearing is. How do we inform the people the clock has started? Will we, if we're gonna do this next week or the first. Are they getting, are we gonna mail letters out to everybody on there stating that we're going to pass the resolution and that will start the clock at this point?
Then you gotta watch, because doesn't. Doesn't that Terry or anybody who would want to appeal it only have fifteen days?
That's what I'm saying.
If you're mailing letters, there goes.
No, what I'm, okay, what I'm saying is, if we're gonna do it next Tuesday. Are we gonna prepare a letter, mail it up this week saying, we are scheduled to take up this resolution, if passed, your time to appeal will start that day. To make, to, they need to be informed one way or the other, you don't pass the resolution and then notify them your time stopped. Your time started.
So they may have lost four days.
Right, you know what I mean, so are we going to mail something out ahead of time if we don't do a public hearing?
We can.
That's what I would prefer.
Good.
If we're gonna do a public hearing, let's at least do a bailing to the property owners affected, saying, we're gonna take the resolution up on this day. If after time, the, the, it was, the, it starts the clock.
So this, this mail, mail, first class mail, or is this priority mail, or is this?
I have favor of the postal service, so I care of you.
I, I get it, but then the guy that, or the person, the individual that gets us, so I never.
That's not our problem.
We'll make the attempt, which is an attempt further above what we need to make, probably, so. Again, they could be watching our meetings, or.
We could send it certified mail, I mean, this is, I, I think it's prudent to let, to be as, be as transparent as possible, and if you're gonna do this, give. The opportunity for anybody else that may change their mind or whatever, and Terry. Will not probably change her mind to be in support, but somebody else might be, change their mind to be against it or want to file an appeal, that's fine, I think. It's very transparent to do it this way, send a letter, certified mail, that this is gonna happen on this date. If it does, if the board takes action and approves it, this date, that date will become your date for what you need to file an appeal. Here's the code section, I'll put the code section as an attachment in there, and then also. Then it starts the interest collection, and they have so many days to notify you guys that they want to make it in ten equal installments. So if we're gonna do that, send out letters, and I would suggest we do this on August first.
Great. I, I think we need to be.
As I said, we don't have to rush, it's not gonna back, back anything up, you know.
So I'll get you this.
As long as we're on the timeframe that's, that it has to be done, I mean, when we start to process and approve the district. We don't have to have, we don't, we're not setting a timeframe that it has to be completed, right? By code.
There was some.
No, to get it all completed, no, the only problem is, is the longer it takes you to do it, remember, we're getting reimbursed based on the estimated cost. So if we build this three years from now and our costs are three years old and that we're getting reimbursed on, we're eating the difference.
I thought there was something. And that we're not getting what time.
Okay, well, that's okay with me if you want to do the track process, yeah.
I think we should notify.
I think we notify, it's gonna be, we're gonna present the resolution that August first and that starts the clock and all the information that you had there.
I'll be calling.
Sticky sign here on the back.
What?
I'll be calling in on that, though.
Put the sign on your arm there, Todd. The other side. I'm gonna sign your arm, whatever.
Why did he put these other, you guys know where to sign. Sign on the line.
I'm gonna walk you over here and sign your arm, man.
Okay, so that was that. We got a safety committee meeting tomorrow morning. And then I mentioned that I'll be, so next week I'll be at that conference. Through Wednesday, and then, anyway, we got this, Wednesday, and then I'm off Friday and Monday, so I'll be, I'll be back here August first, so.
And then ask where the conference is?
Cedar Rapids. I gotta present three different times. I literally told this one guy from Federal Highway, I can't do it a present two hundred times, no, you'd be good, we're gonna talk about safety. Local pro, local project safety plans and what you guys been doing. And I'm like, I can't, I, I have two other presentations, well, there's no conflict, so I'll put you down, thanks for doing that, and that was it.
There you go.
Alright, that's all I have.
Thanks, Todd.
I gotta drop all this stuff off, so I forget.
Make sure you get them sticky notes in the right place, yeah.
The one you're signing in the middle of the page goes, that word stuck it.
Alright, is there any visitors or citizens that are with us today via Zoom or person to address the board? Hearing, we're seeing none, we will move on to Mr. Jim Crocker, our Chief Deputy Sheriff, good morning, Jim.
Good morning, folks. Hey, I am here this morning. To present a contract for law enforcement services between Jackson County Sheriff's Office and the City of Miles. Little background on this, City of Miles has historically contracted with the City of Preston. For law enforcement services, recently for fourteen hours a week. Services at a, at a contract rate. And the City of Preston did drop the City of Miles, so this isn't us going looking to bring in more work that way. We've always provided services to the City of Miles as we do to the City of Preston. When they do not have an officer on duty or in support. But this will be a standalone contract, what we have presented to them is ten hours a week. At sixty-five dollars an hour. For contract services, that's our, our basic contract that we would offer in terms of to say. For the fair, for the rodeo, for other, if somebody needs services outside regular patrol function. Now, in addition to this, we have presented, and they've agreed to a ten percent yearly surcharge with, which is administrative fee on top of everything. Basically, they were getting evidence storage through the City of Preston, things like that, processing fees. Our cost per computer for licensing. Things like that, that would normally be absorbed through the City of Preston, now we're now absorbing that at an additional ten percent, we're charging back, so. This initial contract would be a two, two-year with a yearly fiscal year assessment. Of, of a cost of living increase to that sixty-five. Six, sixty-five dollar an hour contract fee, so. If it was five percent, then we would have the five percent in the next year, reevaluated at two years, termination with sixty-day notice.
So, uh, uh, we, we have regular patrol, our, our regular patrol do that, and, and that time will come off their regular patrol time, or? Or are you gonna have a separate? Car, be it.
This will be, this will be separate from normal patrol.
Okay.
It'll be set hours that we will propose and ask to be filled in, if not filled in, it'll be assigned. So it, it'll, it'll be pretty much a monthly sign up.
So it's nothing that we will be paying overtime per se for?
No, no, everything's gonna be that direct compensation, so, at, at a rate that we, we.
Of course, the personality you're gonna use, or have to, I mean, you'd have to look at their schedule and.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, and, you know, we're, we're gonna try to target hours, we'll work with. With Miles in terms of if there's issues at a certain time, or, you know, should be bar closing or whatever, we'll, we'll target hours, but we do direct. You know, through our.
We still have respancity with Preston to do the departments too, if, yeah.
We, we have complete working agreements with them to include twenty-eights. And I think we work well together, I, I think that's one thing that we've, we've driven hard to do is to. Work well with the other agencies and support them, and they support us.
And I would agree with that, you know, with somebody, incidents that we've had in the past, on either conservation and other departments, I, I think it's a good working relationship, you know, what I hear, you know.
Yeah, and I think we establish that real early on through training, you know, we, we, we don't train exclusive of them, we, we don't look at them different that way, and so I think that's the only way to. In rural law enforcement, you. You don't want to be that lone, you know, lone wolf out there, you want a lot of help, yeah.
So you've, the city, I believe the City of Miles has already approved all this and they're good with it.
They have, they approved it last, last Wednesday at their board meeting, there's a signature page here for. For you folks to endorse the contract as well, I would present that, this does, you know, it, it opens the door to a. A future discussion.
This is the same email we got, right?
This is the final version, there's, there's a couple contractual changes that. We bounced through attorneys and, you know. But it's, it's the same.
Okay.
Moved to approve.
Second, Pat.
I have a motion and a second to approve the. The law enforcement contract with the City of Miles as presented, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
While we're on the subject, I'd just like to plant a seed that I believe this year a workshop session would be appropriate. To talk about services to other towns besides Andrew Lamont, Spring Druck. That when we came into the sheriff's office in twenty-one, there were existing contracts with individual deputies. We didn't find that appropriate, the use of county.
Weapons and cars.
Really, you know, use a, or, or phrase, people dodged the bullet first, for years doing that. We need to readdress that, and I think with, with the attorney, look at what would be appropriate to go into contractual. Agreements with those towns, right now we are providing those without compensation. And Iowa Code says there, they have to provide. Law, law enforcement services or contracts, so. How we barely do that, I think is a bigger discussion than myself, you know, coming up with a formula. Or contracting them myself, so.
Yeah, no, I think we're certainly in favor of, you know, having the discussion, you know.
Alright, I will put something together and propose a workshop at some point.
Alright, thanks, Jim.
Thank you, have a good day. I'll make sure to get happy.
Lisa, do you, would you like to present, or?
Good morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes in July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, board proceedings as written by other. And authorize publication in official newspapers.
I'll make that motion.
Sure. Motion in second to approve the minutes of July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, board proceedings as written, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants of the publication of the claims listing in the amount of four hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-nine cents.
So much.
Second. Motion in second to approve the claims as presented, with a note, there was right at three thousand, a little better, for PVC patching and road improvement, so. We know it's getting done, a little over, yeah, but it, we face PVC patching, and it's a rock. Bills in there, and, you know, so we know that improvements being done, and I've heard nothing but good things about the roads from. That little amount, and also the road from Macoka to Andrew, which just could have kept going.
Someday.
All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Motion needed to accept place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
The move.
Motion in second to place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
I also have on my agenda to talk about the solar project, but that's not, I think, until ten o'clock, so.
Okay. Appreciate it.
My question. My question is, I know it's on our schedule at ten o'clock, but if it's not a public hearing, does it really have to be at ten o'clock? Because.
It's up to you, I mean.
Uh, no, it's just that the agenda was published, and if somebody wants to be here for it, then they're not, I guess, that'd be the only thing.
Yeah, I think we should try to stick to our agenda.
Why don't we take a short recess at this time? We will reconvene at this time, and we're joined by. Becky Chapin, our Human Resources Administrator, good morning.
Good morning. So the salary has been set for the EMS coordinator position and a conditional offer was made, the offer was accepted and all pre-employment has been finalized. So I am here today to ask for a motion to approve hiring Michael Stern as the EMS coordinator, effective August fourteenth, that was a mutually agreed on start date with the association. Including authorizing the county auditor to issue valid paychecks with same.
Second. Motion in a second to approve Mike Storm as the EMS coordinator as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
That's all I have.
Thank you, have a good day.
Their secondary road spot.
Um, they're coming in at ten thirty for that, so I think they kind of finalize that after the agenda was approved, so wait till ten thirty and they'll be back in, okay, make that time.
Okay, thank you. Are you gonna present Luanne's portion also, Lisa?
I am, I think all she has is the calendar, I don't believe that there's anything that.
I'm surprised you, Becky, didn't want to talk about this lock control thing today. Isn't that today?
Yeah, at one o'clock today.
Oh, that meeting, yeah.
So your supervisor's calendar, of course, today is the meeting date, at eleven o'clock, there's a work session on the Jackson County Comprehensive Plan. At one o'clock, there is an IMWCA loss control site visit. At five o'clock tonight, there's a Jackson County Conservation Board meeting at Ozark for anyone that wants to attend. At six o'clock, there's a JCEA. At six o'clock, there's a JCEA um. Here at McCoqueta, at for the Innovate One Twenty office is where it's at, Dan, it looks like you're um scheduled for that meeting, or you can also do it by Zoom. And at seven o'clock tonight, man, there is a board of health uh meeting tonight in the community room. Tomorrow, Wednesday, July nineteenth, at five o'clock is our the park at the green space here in downtown McCoqueta. And nothing Thursday or Friday. United at seven o'clock is the Board of Adjustment in the community room for anyone that wants to attend, and we're back here next Tuesday for our regularly scheduled meeting. And of course, the fair parade next Tuesday night.
Okay, I thank you. And it just so happens, Brianna Kirk has from our Jackson County.
Here.
The affairs department has just walked in and we are just getting a department update. Good morning.
Yes, good morning, how are you guys? All right. So the month of June is pretty busy, uh we filed eighteen federal claims, and but we're still seeing. Claims come back pretty slow, um which is still from the PAC Act. Of the increase of the number of claims that the VA has received. Um we currently still have around ninety-five open claims. So in the month of May, three hundred and eighty-five Jackson County families received a total of six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. In compensation, pen and BIC benefits. And that was up three veterans and twelve thousand two hundred fifty-one since April.
And that's just the month of May.
Yep.
That's a nice number, yeah.
Yeah, I like that. And Lucy started on Monday, the tenth, um so now our office is open from eight-thirty to four-thirty, so. There's no more closing early, um and she will be taking an accreditation course, August twenty-first through the twenty-fifth. And that's a thirty-two hour course, um and it's all online, so.
Also, it's here.
Um I'll probably have her stay home and do it, that way she's not getting interrupted.
Busy, huh?
Yeah.
Things are working out, I assume.
They are.
Good.
Are, and so our Bellevue hours will resume August second from nine AM until one PM.
All good news that I can see.
Tradically, I mean, how often are you open about?
Just the first Wednesday of every month.
First Wednesday.
Yeah, we missed the July meeting, cause I was gone and Debbie's on the train today, so. So we'll start that back up in August.
All good news.
Yeah, any questions?
A comment?
Okay.
I really like the uniform.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so are there any other board or commission reports that somebody would like to? Talk about right now?
I went to Together We Vow last night. Um they are doing kind of a um. Exclusive building preview, so for like large donors and that, and they invited the supervisors. July twenty-second, which is the Sunday before the fair, from one to three PM, they're having, you can kind of do a site. Visit, and they're having refreshments. Uh they're also selling, um still fundraising, obviously, because. They still have expenses out there and they're doing the brick and. Or tile, whatever, selling them yet, and they're looking at doing their gr- annual garage sale. Uh they're trying to get together a fall side by side ride type of deal, so. They got some things still in the works, still trying to get some money going.
I I see the raffle, there was no deadline on the raffle, is that correct?
Um they're looking at drawing after fair, so it might be Sunday night or Monday doing a live Facebook. Be the type of thing.
I don't know whether I need to rent a trailer or.
So, we'll we'll let you store until Tuesday when you come back over for the board meeting, Mike, okay? Um if anybody sees, wants to see what they're getting, they will have that set up at the fair. In person, I believe, so. And then they're.
Well, it's Tuesday, right?
Yes, they're also raffling off um a lifetime admittance to the fair, so. It's non-transferable, you can't leave it in your will or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah. Another thing they're doing, they're gonna do a raffle and also possibly an auction of a couple of them like at the cattle. Sale or something.
No, it's good for uh good for McCoqueta and good for Jackson County, uh they got some real good entertainment this year too, so um look forward to. Good weather and the weather's been beautiful.
Yeah.
Where the humidity's gone.
Oh, Friday.
Well, thank you.
Clay County's gonna get nailed.
We uh we've been very lucky with the with the weather actually for July, you know. Hopefully, we still get a few little rain, maybe Wednesday or Friday, the way it looks.
I think the rain we got really upset all the way down.
It did, it really did, I I did some traveling on on some of the ones that they reclaimed, you know, and. That's, yeah, that's interesting, I mean, it's, I like it, I mean, they narrowed some of them up, of course, but uh. You know, they're gonna get squashed down again and they graded a few times and. It's it's looked like a major improvement to me, yeah.
I did uh have a Mississippi or McCoqueta River Water Management Authority meeting last week, um everything's going. Status quo, um they're still doing some financial talk back and forth between the. Um limestone bluff RCND as far as contractual things kind of renegotiating a little bit. Um other than that, they're in the process of doing right about now their second sampling of the rivers. Everything's going good, we're waiting to get our the data back on that, and. I did start a new committee, uh the Mississippi Valley Workforce Development. You have to serve a weather committees that I started last Thursday was the business. It was a new committee they just started about three months ago and um trying to compile on ways that can help. Improve the workforce development and what they track and, you know, just trying to graph that. And uh threw some suggestions out, because you know, when they do, when a company closes or downsides and they have rapid response. Um through the state to figure out what's happening, how do you help people transition, um they had um. Two counties had three of those events in the last few months, and it just said they were sent out, I'm like, why? How many people were affected, we can get more information, and so they're kind of. Fine-tuning the reports and the information to get out so we can better understand how things are happening, so. It'll be interesting to see how this committee comes together, what we can do.
Good, good. Yeah, I don't really have anything new, I don't think, so um we'll take another short recess. We will reconvene our meeting at this time, and we did go past the visitor uh citizen section, but I see we do have um. Uh citizen on on the Zoom, uh would you like to address the board or just listening in? Good now? Okay, I I will move on, if you want to address the board, don't feel free to speak at us. Good morning, so we are joined, uh Lori Rowley, our zoning, deputy county zoning administrator. Good morning, Lori.
Hi, this will probably be the shortest one I've ever come.
I'm holding to it.
Okay. Anyway, um wind energy um conversion. Uh system, so uh I have started working on that, I was gone all last week, so of course, nothing happened last week. So uh I kind of got the baseline going, and we can kind of talk. Talk about that maybe in a few weeks to see where where we are, we are on that and get you guys' thoughts. I did have a conversation with um the auditor in Delaware County. About why they made changes to their existing ordinance. And a lot of it came down to bonding and um road, road conditions. And that's why they made such, those those such changes, as they saw that there was a few. Weaknesses in their current ordinance, so that's why they beat it up um in that aspect, so.
Okay, so just to add to that a little bit, I did have a conversation a couple of times with uh one of the supervisors up there.
Okay.
And a couple of things that she said to be aware of, and one was out of state property owners. So when they go to get these permits, uh sometimes apparently the setbacks and the and the property lines. Are not addressed property, like out of out of state would kind of leisurely say, yeah, fine. Rather than a local property owner, I don't really know how, what she meant by that, I didn't go into detail, but she said be aware of out of state property.
And you can have a lot of that around here with people buying land to basically hunt on or whatever, so. And and too, I don't think our setbacks would be different for an out of state property owner and a local property owner.
No, yeah, and I don't know if that meant Paul area, da da da.
Getting easements and.
Yeah, but yeah, she was kind of busy at the time too, so I'm, you know, again, if you want to talk to Shirley up there again, she's pretty knowledgeable about that, and she's been through it, so.
And she was the.
Yeah.
And their auditor was was on board, but they didn't have zoning at the time. And there was another thing in their in their ordinance that we were gonna, you know. Take parts of that and use, we have to change, at the time, they didn't have a zoning commission. Or wait, or a board of adjustment, and so um everything went straight to the board of supervisors, which isn't. The way things would normally work, and actually, they should probably redo their ordinance to make.
Well, and that's why we have the board, so we get a recommendation, whether it be we agree or to disagree, but we get a recommendation.
Yeah.
She also stated uh one of the, when they do these sound readings, she said they tend to do them. Give you pieces, parts of of the sound reading, she said, make sure you get the whole. The whole reading, you know, um not just an average, I mean, you want an average. But you want the uh the whole reading of the whole given time it was taken, not pieces, parts of it.
Okay.
And then other problem, and she, it was one of the problems I run into is. Requiring notification, so if you contract with this, this individual to do it or company. They've had it where they had a three company changeover without them really getting notified.
Right.
So it has to be so that if something changes to a different contractor or a different lead or a manager. That that at least we would get notified that, you know, something changing and I don't know if we'd have to approve it, I guess I didn't ask for that.
So basically, just succession.
Well, you know, the contract would sell out to another contractor and and so we.
Or then if you have a problem, so we know who to be contacting there.
Right, right.
And probably as long as you're zoning administrator, you know, who knew, cause they're the ones keeping track of all the paperwork. And would be the person probably reaching out for that, as long as we were able to.
Well, it's no different than a than a contract, I suppose, if you're gonna sell a contract, the contract, whoever's holding contract has to be known.
Mm-hmm, okay, so succession notification.
She pretty much said that Iowa Utilities controlled the rates for them, and she gave me kind of a rough estimate of what each. Unit would be worth for revenue to us or to the county. And she never really heard, I know we read in one of our, one of her that we were reading about shadow time, she said she'd never really heard of that, so I don't know where that. Just bits and pieces that she threw at me.
So the next one is, um I know Ruth was in here last week, which um I had taxpayer asked me to watch the video. And I did, and he had some concerns, but I don't. Um but so July first, the second batch of notices went out to Leisure Lake Property Owners Association. Um so they were dated for July thirty-first for evadement. So that was that, and I know that two property owners that got the notice for the second batch, so after July first. Already asked for extensions due to. The situation, and one was Bishop, which. He has, he talked to me yesterday and has already started making changes, although he knows he's not gonna have everything done in that thirty days. Um which, to me, it it would be tough to have everything done in thirty days, so. Just preemptively knowing that he could not get it done in thirty days, that's why he requested the extension to the end of August. So a thirty day extension, so.
Yeah, and I think we've discussed that enough times, as long as we see improvement, then we're not gonna.
I I haven't.
At some point, we're gonna say, yeah, no, no, but.
I haven't been out there yet um to see it, but he told me there has been improvement and there's things that have, that he has cleaned up.
I did go over there and drive through, go through Circle Drive, um. There's some issues around Circle Drive, yeah.
East Circle or West Circle, probably, oh yeah, there's a lot, we we basically got. It it came in the south side of West Circle, we got two, two properties that, and then stopped. Cause we, there was a lot going on in there, and we were already to the max where we wanted to be on notices. So everything else will come on. Yeah, he is, he's one of the two, and we stopped right after his, cause there's a lot going on.
I was just our first, I didn't see a lot of improvements.
Okay.
So down in the bottom, you wouldn't, they wouldn't have got notices.
That was because of his address did.
So the major lake as a whole really looks pretty good, I mean, they have some new blacktop over there, the billion looks great.
Yes.
I mean, it does, it looks good.
Yes, they put, their association has put some effort.
And I like to see them stepping up.
Yeah, um and there are some. Yeah, there is some room for improvement on their end, um as far as the the association or if, you know, they get a lot of. Pushback, there seems to be a lot of people out, well, it was status quo there for a long time. And lack of enforcement, now you've got people that are actually there willing to do something, and they're getting, they are getting pushed back from the. The old school that, well, this is the way it's been, so yeah, they're getting some pushback, but. But so far, I think. They're moving in the right direction.
You expect it pushback, I mean, that's just the way it's gonna happen, and you get some that don't don't wanna comply.
People don't like trash.
Right, and then the other one that um was the Chapman with the mobile home that Ruth talked about. Um he's not renting it currently, it is not really being rented out. The renter has left, but he still has his stuff there, so that, and then trying to locate that renter's been a challenge.
I would say he abandoned his stuff at that point.
Time frame for that too.
There would be other court action or um civil timeframe, which.
Right.
He'd have to, oh bye-bye, which wouldn't be thirty days, you know, if he's going through those, um that timeframe for civil. That one was on um. Leash, on rocker, yeah, on rock.
Okay, cause I got contacted by somebody, um his name is Ben. Um and he sent me a bunch of pictures and he gave me a case number, it's on East Circle Drive. And he said the owner's name is Alan, and I've been talking to Ruth, uh he's been sending this, I think you guys. She says that I have till the end of the month. And I'll have the porch enclosed by then, so this shouldn't be a non-issue. And I was confused by the word porch.
Um.
Requiring to enclose.
He has not talked to me about that, I'd actually talked to him before I went on vacation. Um I know it's property you're talking about.
Okay.
And he, I don't know why, and we need to double check about that to make sure that.
I don't want him doing anything he doesn't have to do, I mean, cause I I don't know why we'd be regulating whether a porch is enclosed.
Well, and for me, maybe it's so he can, he's looking to do it to put his stuff on somewhere we can't see it. But I'm gonna make sure before he's doing that, that um. That he doesn't have a setback violation if that's what he's gonna do, because things change, there's a difference between. Um open and closed. Um as far as setbacks, so I just, I'd like to be part of that conversation.
Well, this is just, he was just, he said, you know, hey, this is, we, he called me, um. Yeah, he's been doing a lot of work, he sent me pictures, I'm looking at the pictures, he said, I'm like, I'm gonna get up there and take a look. It's one of those, it doesn't look horrible, but then I was just, it says. I have till the end of the month, hopefully this is not an issue, but I'm trying to get the porch enclosed, and I'm just like.
We need to talk about that.
Yeah.
Um and after the media, I'd love to get that phone number for me, cause I'm not convinced I have it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you touched base, and I mean, as long as you've been talking to him in prior and.
Yeah, and then obviously he's had some conversations with Ruth that I'm not aware of yet, but we'll we'll talk, we'll know.
Where do we stand on some of these other ones that we gave the extensions to?
Um.
Like the fire destroyed in fourteen and.
There was some. Progress on that one, where they were actually tearing it down, so I don't know where that is right now. Um the ones.
Till the thirty days comes up, we have no.
Well, that would have been up, I think. Well, that would have been up. I think most of them were like.
In the June.
In the June, so.
So what we did on the ones, and I got your permission to do this, um, is I sent a regular snail mail letter. To those, and those went out the first of July, um, snail mail letter to those that had not made any contact with us. About extension.
Was that a comment to the postal service?
It was sent by regular US males and not by, and not by, um, certified males or by civil service.
Good.
And, um, so yeah, so it went out that way and I had your permission to do that. And let them know that the next step is gonna be this. It was kind of a courtesy. It was not required on our part. And I think I. You know, made, made reference to that. Um, so if anybody says, well, we didn't get that letter. It doesn't matter. You didn't need to get that letter. That was just a, a courtesy on our part. Um, cause I bet that, that, that the bulk of the ten people that we sent the letter to won't. Didn't see it. So, um, so I would say by the first September, we need to, excuse me. Um, after the first of August or right around the first of August is when the court action needs to start happening on those.
Okay.
And then the ones that got the extension. We still need to provide them the same courtesy probably that we just did the other like eight or ten. That we sent the courtesy to.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Is, is our attorney gonna be present here for your next portion here?
I don't know.
You're on ten ten, but anyway, we've got a. Agenda item in between there, so.
I mean, get down there and talk to him if, if I have time.
I believe that regards or in reference to the letter that we got or you got, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and I'll do that. And then also bring you speed, August second. Um, we're having the introductory meeting with the Geo Permission, um, staff from Schneider. So, um, it's, it's an online meeting. Basically they'll kind of introduce themselves. Talk about the timeline, talk about the, what they expect out of us and what we should be expecting out of them. And for any of us that already have documents that we might wanna be using, um, to, to be able to give them those documents and, um. Kind of timelines or flow charts that go with them. And Bjorn's. Gonna be part of that lease. I don't know that you will or won't. You probably don't have any reason to be, but if you want to, yeah. You're part, she was part of the email, so I'm making sure, um. Anyone that might have interest.
Okay.
Okay, and I will got, go down what time, uh, she does, if county attorney and I have to be back.
Then go.
Ten ten. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so we are right on schedule for discussion on the bids for the. Law Enforcement Center Solar Array Project. Uh, Bruce, do you have any other information for us or comments?
A little bit more information. I had a. Had a very good phone call.
And then again, I'm sorry, would you please just introduce yourself? I think we all know.
Bruce Fisher, I'm the Chair of Jackson County.
Thank you.
Um, I had a, a long conversation with Phil Surra, who is the leader of Midwest Solar, which was the lowest bid that we received. Um, informed him that, you know, it wasn't really consistent with our budget, but the supervisors are considering it. They'll make the announcement on the eleventh. Um, he went on to tell me a couple of important factors that influenced his proposal, um, including. One of the technical requirements that we had placed in that proposal. Um, which limited very much the options that the vendors had in terms of selection of an, of the inverter for the system, which is a very significant part of the system. Um, very useful information. He was, first of all, he's a great guy and was very motivated. To work with us and he was trying to help us. If we go out to bid again on it, cause I said, maybe there's a chance that that could happen. Um, he gave me some good details. We wanted, wanna incorporate into the revised RFP. That would give us a broader reach for equipment that wouldn't be so restricted as this requirement was. Um.
We also maybe heard a restriction that maybe that we have quite put up. On the RFP for insurance requirements that maybe was overblown it a little bit.
Yes, and we kinda knew that. Um, I said that that was something that we would consider in, in the new proposal.
So you're okay with me contacting the insurance company and asking for a reduction of that amount?
I'd say yes.
Was that the insurance company asking for that?
Yeah. He told, and like I said, he told me the price is significant.
Oh, it was. Our normal vendors that come in and do whether, whatever it is, you know, for us are not required that amount.
Right, right. So I think if.
So I guess on that side of it, we didn't put together the RFP, so we don't know what.
One other factor that was a thing and it had to do with the delivery date.
Okay.
Um, particularly for the equipment that we were restricting them to use. He said the back orders, there's no way it's gonna get in this year. So again, we need to have, uh, more, um. You have more flexibility in terms of the type of equipment they're gonna use. Probably some more vendors maybe, and I think we're gonna, nobody's gonna finish it by the end of September, um, especially moving it back now with, if we go out to bid again. So I think what our, you know, we're gonna reconsider the timeframe and the delivery date. It wasn't the opinion that it'd be done this year, which is really important. Um, you know, we wanna be in that first wave for that extra ten thousand dollars we might get. Um, so there are three things we wanna change on the proposal or on the RFP. Um, we're prepared to do that quickly. Depending on your decision regarding the bids we've received. Um, and Midwest was by far the superior bidder, um. Just not.
And I did have contact from another vendor that said he just missed the timeline, so. Um, I guess he was requesting another option added too, if it was in our best interest.
I've heard from two other vendors now.
Okay.
Um, um, both of whom say, well, one of whom says, we intended to bid, we will definitely bid the next time we were here five minutes. Too late kind of thing.
So I guess, you know, I don't know. We've talked about this and we've seen some email alerts is, is, and recommendations, and I think if it's your recommendation to. I mean, I had some sticker shock, yeah, but I don't know all the details of it and I didn't write the RFP, so.
I don't know the requirements. You say some of the equipment that we were requiring was very limiting. Why was it being required?
Well, the inverters efficiency rating was the key factor that he was looking at. Inverters, the thing that transfers the. Direct current, the wild, like a GM two AC for the, for the jail. And, uh, seventy percent, seventy-five percent efficiency means that seventy-five percent of energy is captured and, and, and transferred over into AC. You're only losing three percent of your energy. Um, apparently there's only, and we said we want ninety-seven percent efficiency. Um, which is what Hurstville had, and we thought that's, that's kind of the gold standard. Well, it turns out today, there's only one company that makes an invert. It's ninety-seven percent.
Good.
Um, he says, if we go down to ninety-five percent, we're gonna open it up. We'll get a couple other inverters that will not only reduce our cost. But will help us alleviate the potential supply chain issue that's associated with the one that we recommended.
Okay.
Maybe a lot.
Okay.
No, it's not. Yet you're talking sense.
Not like you're asking to go down to sixty or something like that.
Right.
Any further discussion or the wishes of the board?
I would make a motion to reject the current bids and reissue an RFP with the said. Recommendations from the, uh, Jackson County Energy District.
I would second that.
I have a motion in second to reject the original solar array project biz. And to send, uh, and to redo the RFP and, and resubmit.
No, when to, before we actually, when would you want those due by? Is there gonna be a quick turnaround? Is this a one week, two weeks?
Well. I would recommend we try to get it out this Friday.
Good.
Um, we can make the changes today, get them to, to lease it a review, can work with Bjorn. Um, same list of vendors, although I think I might have one additional one, but I wanna contact the first if we get another vendor in there or two even. Um, did we leave it open for two weeks or for one week last time?
So I went back and I'm looking at the RFP. We did send it out on June first. We asked that bids were due by three PM on June thirtieth. And then we extended it an extra week until that three PM, um. So it's three PM on the tenth. We gave them an, you know, an extra week. Um, then we were, the original was to have the bid opening on July third with the contract association with potential winning bidder. And potentially award the bid on July eleventh. So really they had like thirty days.
Yeah. And I don't know that we wanna go out that far. I would say two weeks.
My thought is that they, they know the project now. They know what, what's happening and if we have. Potential, uh, new vendor, they also know what's happening and we're prepared. And if they're gonna make their. Few changes, they can make them few changes in a timely manner.
I agree totally.
Okay, so just looking at the calendar, you're looking to have it out by the twenty-first? And, uh, if they have it back by the fifteenth or the twenty-second?
I think, are you thinking maybe, cause if we do get it out this Friday? You know, have it back by the seven.
That's two weeks and, and, yeah, that sounds right to me.
For the fourteenth and go with the fifteenth.
Hate to push us out too far because I, I think, I think that first option.
I think if somebody's interested, they better get off the chair.
So we get it out Friday, the twenty-first, uh, bids are due. By the seventh, which is that Monday, we open at nine thirty.
Make that very bold.
That gives them, that gives them.
On the eights.
Okay, so that only gives them a week to begin, but the twenty-ninth is a, that week, the week of the first is the only.
It gives them two weeks to work on that.
Well, they probably gotta get it until the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth.
We email everything out.
Oh, okay, okay.
We did everything by email, so we, it went right there.
I'm good with that.
So that would be in my bid, or my motion was, it goes out by Friday. Due by the seventh, open on the eighth.
I'll second that.
Um, okay. Motion in second to, um, we seek a new RFP as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. And reject bids.
And.
Reject.
Yeah.
Yeah. Reject the original, uh, bids, solar array bids. And to go out for a new RFP with the changes. And corrections. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
On that, they'll know that there's different spends in that part.
Absolutely.
Going out.
Yeah.
That'll be molded or whatever.
I'm gonna contact every vendor again, preceding your distribution so that they will be prepared for, you know.
Be looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Yep. Anything else? Griff, you have anything? All right. Just turn be quiet, man. He said that with a lot of respect. Anytime, you're welcome anytime. All right, so we will take another short recess. We will reconvene at this time and we are joined by Mr. John Keys, our Jackson County Attorney. Good morning.
Good morning, uh, sorry if I was tardy. We have a juvenile task force that, that met this morning at eight thirty. With a bunch of different disciplines and I was at that, so.
You do what you have to do. We're at your mercy.
Thank you.
So we're here to discuss, uh, um, maybe our options, if it will.
Or I think we were challenged on the locality of us being in Leisure Lake.
That's correct. And you have an opinion on that letter?
I do. Uh, it is a letter from the Assistant of Leader Lake, as I understand it, and the letter simply says. If I could, uh, read your digest version is. The county can't be up here because. I, the homeowners association, don't want to hear a session. Well, what the county.
I didn't mean, what he, I think the paraphrasing would be better stated is. Because the homeowners association didn't conduct a vote of the homeowners, they don't have the authority to ask us to be there.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, to me, that's what I got out of it.
That's, yeah.
Is because the homeowners didn't vote for the homeowners association asked us to be there.
And that may be true. Uh, I, I have been staying out of interpreting, uh. Leader Lake Property Owners Association's rules. Uh, they could certainly enforce the rules if they wished and they could do all the things that I think, uh, that, or zoning officers trying to do. But that's a separate issue. The issue is whether the county can enforce its zoning ordinances on private property. And of course we can. County Home Rule gives, uh, the board that authority. We're not inconsistent with the constitution. Where there's municipalities who have zoning or ordinances that conflict with the county municipality. Excuse me, the city municipality, their, uh, laws and ordinances, uh, take priority. Leader Lake Property Owners Association is not a municipality within any meaning of the term. It is county property. Whether we should be on it, given they have an HOA, that's a political decision, but legally, yeah, just. Most nuisance violations are on private property. Um, it, it's interpretation. It's whether it's junk, whether it offends the census, whether it's contrary to health or welfare. Um, I, I drove up there with Lori and I looked at Leader Lake. I hadn't been up there in years. It's a lot different than what I remember. And honestly, I told Lori, I didn't look at that.
No, I, I mean, we.
There, there been some improvement even.
Now, there are some areas that, oh, well, yeah.
Yeah, this is what.
Okay.
And you're always gonna have some.
And you're gonna have that. Um, but I think Lori had made tremendous work just sort of cajoling people. Hey, can you clean up this tire? The neighbors are complaining mosquitoes and she's done great work there. We talked to a couple of them.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I think we have the authority to do it. It looked, really, Leisure Lake looked really good from the part that we toured. And, um, you know, you're gonna find old machinery in any part of Jackson County. Um, and that's, that sort of thing. And I don't think that's what we're trying to do. I think we're dealing with complaints that neighbors have. And the problem with Leisure Lake is people live, it's, it's in the country, but they live pretty close together. And they're part of this HOA. The HOA apparently isn't doing anything to, to, to help with the different neighbors complaints. So Lori's trying to do that. I think we have the authority to do it. Um, it's a political decision as to what we do from here. I think you have to take it by a case by case basis.
And we have, um, there's been really seriously complaints up there for decades and it's been handled. One at a time and not necessarily follow through. And I think the follow through is what's important here. Um, and then with the complaints I get. I can pull up online real quick and see where they're complaining about and look two doors down. And then I'll ask them, what about this property? Oh, well, that one's not as bad and I don't wanna get him in trouble. And I'm like. That's not the best way to do things on a knee jerk reaction. It needs to be consistent.
So Lori, have you been to HOA meeting when they've had their meeting?
No.
Okay, well, I have been in years past and, and I don't know that you shouldn't address the HOA meeting, you know, or whether it be a. Board, vice president, president, I don't know how they're set up. But, um, to have this discussion, that they really need to help themselves also. You know, we, we presented that to them.
Yeah.
And so when you say case by case, I'm assuming that we're gonna address this individual with either a letter or a follow up somehow?
Yeah, the ordinance calls for the sending of an abatement notice and that's served on them and the manners are owed. And so you serve the notice of, hey, we think there's a problem. You have, uh, this much time to abate the, the nuisance and here's what abate means. Take all these tires and move them or something like that. If that doesn't happen, and they can, they can, uh, appeal that. They can, they can appeal that to the supervisors and say, we want reconsideration of this.
Mm-hmm.
Decision. And I understand a couple of people may have done that. If we still think there's a nuisance and the timeframe is getting out, it's not being invaded, then the county. Has the power to, to, to issue a civil infraction. And, uh, the code says seven hundred fifty dollars can be assessed per day. That the violation exists up to a maximum of maybe fifteen hundred. I think that's what it is. Uh, of course, the goal is to bait the nuisance and the ordinance also gives the county the power to do that. If the county wished to, we go in and clean it up and assess the cost of the, that's yours.
Right, but this lady's letter, wasn't it something about? What you're seeing is cause you came on private property. So she was kind of questioning.
It's, it's a gentleman.
Okay, sorry. The, the letter was kind of questioning if the way we went about that since the. Association didn't contact all of the property owners and have it be voted on. On if it was okay for us to even go into their history per se.
Sure.
To stay on the roads and look at the properties.
Yeah, I think that's okay. Look, a piece of delivery by, or go in there. Whenever you have a road, it's an invitation for the public to come in. Now, they, those roads may be private within the homeowners association, but we see those in subdivisions all over the place. I think it would be more problematic if we got out and started walking around on private property without people's permission. Then I think if somebody said, excuse me, uh, I don't want to hear police leave. Then I think if somebody said, excuse me, uh I don't want to hear police leave, my advice would be, who needs really even apologize? Because I think they have a right to exclude us at that point, unless we're doing some kind of official county business.
Yeah, the official, the, to use a subdivision definitely should don't work for me, because when a subdivision is made, the utilities in the street are deeded to the city or the municipality, or these roads aren't.
I understand that.
Okay.
I, I get that they're completely different kind of thing, uh I, I do understand that, um but the idea that no one without invitation go into Leisure Lake and use the roads, I, I think this doesn't work legally. A road is an invitation to go on there, and people have guests, people have visitors, um uh all kinds of fire crews may go on there. I think if you're going on there for county business, investigating the plate, I think that's legitimate purpose to drive on the roads. I, I honestly think that's completely defensible in court. Now, is that something we wanna do? Again, that's a political decision.
Okay, so again, we have a, a process for abatement. But we also have this individual letter. I would like to see that letter addressed back to him, just to what you're telling us, we think we have the legal right because of this and that, and this is I think he needs to, or he needs to know that this is what our interpretation.
I can certainly help you do it. I think once my office gets involved, it has a different tenor with people. People can frighten when they get lawyer, letters from lawyers. And I don't wanna frighten them, I just wanna give them information.
It's not to the point that we're trying to frighten or intimidate anybody, we're just addressing his letter and saying, hey, this is this is our legal interpretation of it, and this is what we're gonna do.
Yeah, I'm, I was just saying that, I think the letter should probably come from Lori, who was addressed to, but I'll certainly look at it for form and content and help you with it.
Yeah, I mean, you consulted with.
And you can even mention.
And that was what I had let them know immediately, that this is a a question that needs to be addressed by our county attorney.
And we did talk about it.
Yeah.
And we did talk about.
I appreciate it.
And the gentleman that we're talking about, um he was part of the, the second group of letters.
Yeah.
On the second group of notices, so he would have been served on or after July, um July first. And his letter, email came to us shortly, shortly after that. So he was served by this sheriff's office of, of the, of the violations that we have served, and so that's what generated his his letter to us.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Let's follow up.
All right.
Root input?
No. Thank you guys.
Yeah, thanks, John.
Again, let us know if uh the direction, if there's a different direction, and we're wanting to go with this and I'll talk here with you before we before we start sending on the.
Yeah, because you have something, Lori, and get with, get with John.
So we'll be talking.
Okay, well, that's definitely.
Yeah, you think? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will.
All right, you, you know, Don, another example, I just referred to me, like, my home, we, we own the land ourselves. But people are allowed to go in there all the time. It, this is an example. Um and when I think, I'm thinking of search and seizures, and what we've heard has said, yeah, you can do without a warrant, and walk it out to knock on the door. Yeah. I just wanna make sure we're legal standing, and then I did look into that, and yeah, that's my goal too, I wanna make sure we stay on the right side of it.
Cool. Thanks, John.
Yep.
And we didn't get a hold of Laura, but we will try again to see if we can.
Is it coming back over?
Todd.
Yes.
And Todd has chose to rejoin us.
Oh, yeah, so there's a item here to uh have you guys to authorize payroll deduction for a new employee. Uh so this is the opening that was created through uh Bear's Retirement, and then Skimmy went to Leadman, Prom went to the truck, Kilgore went from Grader to the truck. So we ended up with the opening tax break report here.
Yep, so.
So we went through the interviewing high pro- hiring process, and then um made a tentative offer to Brian Marburger. And uh went through all the pre-appointment, physical, drug tests, background check, criminal work, all that stuff, so everything was fine, so just uh recommending to approve him for that.
And the start date?
July thirty first.
What was his name again, I'm sorry.
Brian.
Brian Marburger first.
So I have a motion to approve the hiring of Brian Marburger as a motor grader operator, and authorize the utterance office to issue biweekly paychecks starting July thirty first, twenty twenty three.
I'll approve that motion.
Will you make that motion?
Make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
There you go.
I'll second that. A motion in second to approve the hiring of Brian Marburger and the start date as presented, uh and payroll as needed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
You know where he's from.
He's from the rest of Miles area.
It's a big, big area.
Miles area.
Five two O six four zip code, if you want to know.
It's all in me, I figured it all out in there.
Will you run your own background check?
Okay, anything else, Todd?
No, well, actually, did the board actually set the interest rate for the secondary road suspension? Though that's, I'm concerned, okay.
We did that by revolution.
Do you say so?
Well, I know it's done, I was trying to decide if to put in your resolution or put it separately.
All right. Thanks, Todd. All right. So we're moving right along here, we're right on schedule, and we have Jack Willie and Lynn Bokes. Um, or our disability services with us for an update. Good morning. Beautiful day, huh?
Beautiful day. Yeah. Yes, it is.
So we're here again to review the uh governing board meeting from the mental health and disability services region, which was held yesterday. Less eventful meeting, I would say.
Than normal?
Um, I can say a little. Yeah. The regional financial report, David Farmer was not there, the fiscal agent, but Lori Elin, the region CEO, provided that report. And I guess the thing that we're looking at at this time of the year is the projected ending fund balance. Once the books are closed on FY twenty three, will likely be about fifty percent, so keeping in mind, we're supposed to be at about twenty percent. So um what that means is we may have over three million dollars that the state will withhold from the region when they send out quarterly payments. Wow, those quarterly payments will probably be impacted in January and April of twenty twenty four. Um, we added a couple more board members yesterday to meet um Iowa Code. The Tipton Police Chief is now a board member, and Lynn Helgendorf is a board member representing a relative of a person receiving services from the disability services room.
Lynn used to be on the board um a while back, and she is a parent of, of, of a person getting services. And um Lisa Dufus is the chief of police in Tipton. And then Nancy Nauman, who is a provider of services, is now also a voting member. Before, they couldn't vote with the new change in the Iowa Code, she is entitled to vote, so that increased the board to three members.
Two of them, of course, are services, will also be naming someone to serve on the board, and we have a couple of other vacancies. Once the board is fully um staffed, it will have the twelve person board, and all members will have voting privileges. So that was effective July first of this year.
So, will this? I mean, you said we were supposed to have our balance at twenty percent. Can we leave it at thirty percent and get by? Are they gonna take it right down to the twenty?
No, the state takes it right down to twenty.
Okay, and can you tell me what that balance would be? What's twenty percent of our?
Oh, um, yes. Twenty percent would be two point five million.
And it's gonna be sufficient for our needs? Of the region's needs?
Well, we will still get payments from the state. And none of these books are actually closed. I think the region closes our books uh September thirtieth.
Yeah.
After that, then the reports are due to the state by December first. That's when the numbers are actually finalized, and that's when the state looks at what we have in our fund balance, compares it to where it should be. And then that's why it will not imp- impact the payments coming from the state until January of twenty twenty four.
And the reason you have overages or your fifty percent is because you guys have contracted services that need to be provided with no providers.
That's correct, that's correct.
So, and they have, this is the one chance for the government actually has the one, they just can't spend it.
Right. And largely due to a lack of workforce.
Right.
Mm-hmm, so one of the big expenditures that will start, hopefully by August first, will be um employing, contracting with the company that's going to do um prescribing services for us on um uh basically a crisis basis. Um it's gonna fill the gap from when somebody, say, gets out of a hospital, and they need to continue on medications, but they can't get in with a prescriber in the community, uh psychiatric prescriber for possibly up to four or five months. We're calling them bridge appointments, and this prescriber will be remote, and they will have, they're gonna start out, I believe, with um twenty appointments a week for people to be seen by this contracted prescriber to get them until they can get to their regularly scheduled initial appointment with a community based provider. And that's an expensive service, because we're talking about psychiatric prescribing.
We'll be talking after the meeting about an individual case to see if there's anything maybe we can.
Certainly, yeah, we happy to do that, yeah.
Yeah, we also got a report on Solutions Point, the training from the, the men from Texas came up to train law en- law enforcement officers, and in this first year, a hundred and eleven had been um trained. And that was a little above what our goal was, and so we're excited about that. And they talked about some of the, well, and particularly Lisa, before the law enforcement officer from Tipton said that one of the big problems they have is for them to take off for those forty hours, they have to have replacements to take their place, and uh Tipton only has a force of six, six individuals, so it makes it kind of hard. Plus, they still get paid while they're at the training, and so there was some discussion about us looking at reimbursing the cities and the counties for wages um for these individuals that are taking the training. And so that's something that we will, we'll be discussing as well. And then they also talked a little bit about um maybe they could beg, borrow, or steal a police officer from another town, and have them come in and fill in, but that's something we're not gonna deal with.
No.
That's something they'll have to deal internally with.
Between their surrounding communities. Yeah, um so the one thing that will come across your desk here probably at by the end of August is the region does need to amend their current twenty eighty agreement with five counties, and the changes that need to be made are the ones that are the result of some legislation this past year, so the composition of the governing board, for example. Um, the state, uh the leg- legislature in Iowa Code has added representation from the court system and law enforcement, so that if not, obviously indicated in our most, in our current twenty eighty agreement, so it's basically that, and the fact that all voting, all members on the governing board are now voting members. Previous to July first, some of them are ex officio non-voting.
Um, in particular, those that are providing services. Um they were not able to.
Right, they're, they're non-voting.
Mm-hmm.
Uh if you remember, kind of the approach to the governing board is really moving away from locally elected officials to other representatives of people who um are able, need the services offered through the mental health region. So going forward, the composition of the membership on the governing board cannot consist of more than forty nine percent of elected officials. Which won't affect us because of having only five counties. Even if every county had their board of supervisor be the representative, and still they five out of twelve, so maybe I think it wouldn't be of that forty nine percent. And that's really all I have.
Well, they also talked about the nine eight eight number that people can call if they need assistance. Um they checked, and um in the last year, they had thirty one thousand contacts from people in Iowa that called ninety a week.
And did I read somewhere that it was up like thirty five percent or thirty, thirty?
It was, she didn't give a percentage, but it was, it was well used during this last.
Yeah, I just read that yesterday, I think.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, otherwise, that was about it. Uh there are several contracts that were approved for FY twenty four, and the local ones imagine the possibilities. And I'll be taking one probably in August for Hillcrest, but other than that, um there were the contracts from other agencies throughout the other four counties. That's all I have today.
And we also talked about an intensive residential home, um Lynn County and, and um does have an intense care, and it takes, it's really, I mean, it's, it's really, really high intense train um uh staffing. And um so we are negotiating with them to provide a home into home for four individuals. And then they wanna open another one um in our region. And she said it would either probably be in Cedar County or Jackson County. So we'll see.
Yeah, that would be beneficial.
The state required that every region have what's called an intensive residential services home. First, um we had previously put out in our request for proposals for providers to come forth and be interested in offering that particular type of service here in our region. And we didn't have any providers locally that were interested, so we are going into an agreement, I'm MOU with the East Central Region um to assure that we'll have coverage.
Um, before the governing board, we had an advisory committee meeting with the adults and childrens. And one of the things that they talked, they contracted with Lutheran Family Services, and they will be working with the hundred and twenty five school districts in our region to um work with the students and, and try to provide some services for them. And it said, I wrote down, La- liaison will be working with the children to do the testing of you, to see what teaching assistance they may need. So.
Do they still do the program, uh the positive text email type thing? I know at one time there was a program where it was a real positive, I think it was through the, you were.
The challenge to change?
Yeah, maybe. I don't remember what it was called.
That's the training, challenge to change is a program, um training for emotional wellbeing, and how for kids how to handle their emotions. Using some, you know.
What they were giving or being sent uh to certain individuals like daily, positive.
Oh, um wasn't, recently, that's not been through the region.
Okay. I don't, where did I got that? Was that, maybe that was through Decap, maybe?
That should be.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that could be.
Yeah, I think that's right. So, well, I appreciate it, all the input. I know you appreciate you guys working on that.
And they, they did talk about the, the two state mental health, health, health hospitals. Cherokee will just be a uh uh a holding place for specialists, and Independence will be dealing just ju- juvenile. Or, or they had the whole city, uh at Independence, and now they'll be just dealing, and it won't have as many beds either, available.
Um I was thinking Lori said they were gonna keep the ninety two beds.
I thought she said sixty six.
Oh, maybe.
Maybe I, I could have been tuned off or something, but um.
So the state's gonna, yeah, specialize the populations that Independence and Cherokee will serve. Um that was effective July first in legislation, but I don't think they're ready to implement it. It sounds like they're still in the process of doing that. So we'll see how that works. It's pretty difficult to get people in to those hospitals anymore, because there are so few beds compared to what there used to be. Iowa used to have four mental health institutes.
Mm-hmm, now we're down to two.
Mm-hmm, you've had two for a number of years now.
Yeah.
Well, the idea was not have institutionalized.
Right, yeah. Mm-hmm. The state of Iowa was in the process of closing Glenwood Resource Center. Um, that is directly the result of some investigations by the Department of Justice at the federal level. And I think they're probably within a year of needing to have that closed.
So I think, I think so. Usually, um. Kelly Garcia gives us a report every month that our human service council made, and so that's. Thursday of this week, so.
Mm-hmm. That's all I have. Any questions?
No, appreciated.
Okay.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Yep. Are you tied up now? Do you wanna just?
We, we are tied up.
Okay.
We have a work schedule. After our meeting, so. And it looks like everybody's here.
We have to involve sometime. Um, I'll be in Dad's work after for meetings, but I can leave mine.
Think about what we said.
Sure. Um, actually.
Or just adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, I think we're. About cleared up.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.